Good morning. It's Wednesday, December 31st, 2014, our final meeting of the year, Board of Commissioners meeting. We're in the Senator Hearing Room, 555 Court Street in Salem. I think it's nine o'clock if I didn't say that. Anyway, we start our meetings with a Pledge of Allegiance, and if you'd join us, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Our first item is always public comment. Nobody has signed up to take advantage of that this morning, so we'll move right to the consent calendar. Commissioner Cameron?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll move the consent calendar. First item on the calendar is under Public Works, approve Corden Road Supplemental Agenda Agreement Number 30084 for $781,000 to the Master Certification Agreement Number 28125 between the Oregon Department of Transportation and Marion County. Also under Public Works, approve a resolution transferring $120,000 from contingency to special payments within the Public Works Fund. The Sheriff's Office, approve Amendment Number Two to enter governmental agreement for $90,000 for Chomekata Community College to continue providing the student opportunity for achieving results, or known as the SOAR program. Under the Tax Collector, approve an order authorizing the property tax refund in the amount of $47,119.15 to Strickfadden LLC.
I'll second the motion.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Approve the consent calendar is just read. Any further discussion? Are you none of them in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Our first item under action this morning is a health, consider adoption of an ordinance amending the Marion County Code, Chapter 8.40, smoking to prohibit the use of electronic cigarettes by emergency procedure. And, yeah. Rod, if you'd just go ahead and introduce everybody as you'd like to start.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Rod Cawkins, Marion County Health Department Administrator. And just by way of a brief overview for your next two items, I'd like to say that we're bringing two items to you today for consideration regarding smoking and tobacco use on Marion County properties. Smoking and tobacco use is one of the primary contributors to ill health and escalating healthcare costs, and really to the loss of quality of life. We also know that smoking affects not just those who smoke, but is a danger to others around them through secondhand smoke. The Oregon Clean Air Act prohibits smoking in public buildings and within 10 feet of doors, windows, and air intakes, and that's definitely a good step toward improving health in our state. Quitting smoking is tough, and I think that we need to consider any moves to reduce smoking and tobacco use as requiring us to provide assistance and supports for smoking cessation. Okay, so I said there were two items we want to bring to you today, and the first is a proposal to amend Marion County Code regarding smoking, to add a prohibition for e-cigarettes or electronic vaping devices. The second item is a more comprehensive ordinance that would move Marion County properties to a tobacco-free status within the next year and a half. And really, the reason that we're here today, the reason we're bringing these proposals to you, is out of a hope for improving the health of those who work at Marion County, as well as those that we serve. So I think we'll start with Bruce Armstrong for the first item.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Commissioners, for the record, Bruce Armstrong, a senior assistant legal counsel with the county. As Rod spoke about, this first item-
Bruce, I'm not sure that's working. Would you mind just using the other one? It doesn't sound right.
Sure, it doesn't.
There you go.
Maybe it's just me. For the record, Bruce Armstrong, Assistant Legal Counsel. As Rod said, there's two items today. This first item is an amendment to make a single change to our current code language, and it's requested that this be acted upon in an emergency procedure, so it takes effect immediately. The current code in Marion County is pretty much just geared towards incorporating the Oregon Indoor Clean Air Act, and it only goes that far in that the current code language prohibits smoking in county buildings and facilities, and it prohibits smoking within 10 feet of a door or a window that opens to one of these buildings. And the key issue is, the code speaks in terms of tobacco and smoking. And so what is excluded from that, or what is not specifically called out in that, is any use of e-cigarettes. And e-cigarettes, there's two things with that, is one, they are not lighted. Our definition of smoking in the current code refers to lighted tobacco products. E-cigarettes are not lighted, and as a nicotine delivery device, they don't necessarily, or don't customarily, contain tobacco. So in a desire to have clarity on, to have the code apply to e-cigarettes, we're adding language, or we're proposing to have language added that would include them. Diana Dickey is here, and she'll speak to the impacts and other issues relating to e-cigarettes. But what we have here today is a proposal to include within the definition of smoking, which is addressed in the code, that smoking, or to smoke or smoking includes the use or the carrying of any e-cigarette that is turned on or expelling vapor. So, much like if someone, the definition of smoking is if you're carrying a lighted product, or actually smoking a cigarette, or something along those lines, carrying an e-cigarette that is turned on or using it would qualify under the code, and it would be prohibited under our code. So we're looking to have that added, added by an emergency procedure, so it would take effect immediately. But I'll, with that, I'd be happy to answer questions later, but I'll pass this off to Diana.
Thank you. I wanted to bring, Commissioner Carlson asked if I would bring our candy jar, just to talk just a little bit about all the new and emerging tobacco products that are out there. E-cigs, e-cigarettes are one of those things. But just to show you this, these, this is a jar of products that were purchased locally, and they are, some of them are electronic devices, some of them are tobacco products. They're not your traditional cigarettes, or other, they are products that have youth appeal. They usually have a scent, they have a color, the way they're packaged. So there's a number of these things. These products are included in our comprehensive ordinance, because they are all nicotine products, and they're all addictive, just like tobacco is. And also mentioned, they all are scented as well. I know Commissioner Carlson had a chance to look at one of these and smell it, and it's quite interesting when you put all of the mix of all the different smells and the tobacco in there. So, and there are just new, and more of these coming out every year, so they come up with other ways to make tobacco products enticing, especially to youth. So that leads into what this first proposal is, in adding e-cigarettes to the ordinance. I brought some examples of electronic cigarettes, just so you can see them, and one of the issues, some of the issues around electronic cigarettes. Electronic cigarettes do contain nicotine, so they're just as addictive as tobacco. Many electronic cigarettes look like regular cigarettes, so I have one here. It's not quite the same color, but they do make them that look just like a regular cigarette. So from an enforcement perspective, it would be really hard to tell the difference if you didn't have electronic cigarettes in there, if you wanted to be able to enforce. I mean, you'd literally have to walk right up to someone and see what it was. So from a distance especially, it would be very difficult to enforce that. Electronic cigarettes do have a lot of appeal to youth. The, actually, the common term, more common term now is vaping. In fact, Oxford Dictionary made vape its word of the year for 2014, because it's just become so popular, and it's an ever-evolving technology. So just like these products, they're coming up with new and different ways to vape the nicotine liquid that goes into these. Right now, there aren't any federal, state, or local restrictions on electronic cigarettes for youth, or for youth purchasing, or youth use. There's no restrictions at all. And I just want to just mention, so the liquid that goes into these products, it comes in pretty much any flavor you can imagine. So it doesn't smell like tobacco, it'll just take on the scent of whatever you put in there. You can pretty, like I said, you could pretty much get any flavor you want. This I brought is root beer flavored liquid, but they can mix it, just like a cocktail, like a mixed drink. You can just go to the store where they sell this, and you tell them whatever it is you want, and they'll put it in there. One of the concerns, especially with electronic cigarettes, is that, especially in Washington and Colorado, kids have been putting THC oil, or marijuana oil, in these, and you cannot tell the difference. I mean, you'd have to send it to a lab to find out, you know, what exactly is being smoked, because again, it doesn't take on the scent of that. So that's been one of the concerns with electronic vaping devices. So, excuse me. I just also want to mention that there aren't any long-term studies right now on the safety of electronic cigarettes. There are some early studies, though, that suggest the secondhand vapor may be harmful, because it's not steam, it is actually vapor from the oil, and so some early studies are suggesting that. But unlike regular, traditional tobacco products, we don't have 50 years of studies to show. It's just, it's too early to know any, if they're safe or not. So that's why we're recommending the amendment to include electronic vaping devices in the ordinance.
All right, questions, comments? Go ahead.
Well, thank you for bringing the candy jar. That is so amazing. But could you, or Rod, describe for people here and people listening, the story that you've told us in, when we've been having the pre-meetings, excuse me, about people coming into the lobbies, and e-cigarettes, since they're not forbidden, there's some, I guess, lack of clarity in terms of whether or not you can tell them not to light up in the lobby. So someone, a client coming in could not smoke a cigarette on Marion County property, but right now, as I understand it, it's not clear that they couldn't smoke an e-cigarette. Can you just talk, speak to that?
I think we have seen people coming into the lobbies with e-cigarettes, but a little bit more disturbing, under contract with the Oregon Health Authority, all of our treatment facilities for folks with chemical dependency are tobacco-free, not just smoke-free. And so we've actually had a few folks who have been brash enough to light up an e-cigarette in groups there, which I think really is kind of undermining the whole notion of moving toward recovery from addiction on substances. So I think that there's a lot of instances here where, as Diana said, the enforcement piece of it is very difficult, because when you see somebody from afar, it looks like they're smoking a cigarette, and you walk up to them, and they're vaping, and we don't have the ordinance right now that would allow us to say, that's not okay here.
And Diana, maybe just to follow up with you, and you probably said this, but just to kind of emphasize it, so we can't really tell what's in it when they're smoking an e-cigarette, right? It could be marijuana, it could be nicotine, it could be just root beer syrup, and if the studies are not clear yet, as you were saying, because we don't have enough time and enough evidence, if they are smoking nicotine, aren't the studies about the impacts of nicotine on your system? I mean, those would pretty much just correlate, right? And do we know at all whether by vaping, the nicotine is, is it, how do I say this? Is the connection between nicotine and how it gets ingested into the system, does it get ingested more quickly, less quickly? Do we know, I mean, that kind of thing?
I've read a study that it goes into your bloodstream quicker through the vaping. I haven't done a lot of research on that part of it, but you're right, we can't tell what's in here without actually sending it to a lab, so I think that's important. The other thing is, the early studies are actually talking about the secondhand vapor. So we know about the harmful effects of secondhand smoke, but there have been questions, you know, because it's a vapor, and it could, you know, people around you might be smoking it, or, you know, might, I'm sorry, might be breathing it in, or if it even gets on surfaces, clothing, and that kind of thing. And so those are the early studies that are showing that that could be harmful at this point.
Great, thank you.
Go ahead. Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I'm not sure who can answer this question, maybe, maybe it's counsel. When does THC oil become legal in Oregon? Is that July 1st of 2015, based on the?
As I recall, it is, for personal use, it is six months out. I believe it's July 1st that that kicks in.
For adults.
For adults, and not public use, but in private, personal use.
July 1st, Commissioners, that would be for the possession and the homegrown products, so someone could perhaps make their own at that point. However, any commercial purchase or sale of any kind of marijuana or THC products not going to take effect until 2016, when the Oregon Liquor Control Commission adopts rules.
Thank you, thanks, Gloria. I guess it's probably more, I just want to be really clear, that this is, the state does not have this policy implemented yet, right? And there, there's nothing on the books about e-cigarettes being considered a tobacco product, so we are actually moving forward in front of what the state has done? Am I not?
E-cigarettes are included in the state tobacco-free policy.
Okay, so there's no smoking of e-cigarettes on state properties, but on the Clean Air Act, that applies to others, e-cigarettes have not been adopted into the Clean Air Act, that's what?
The Clean Air, sorry, Commissioner, the Clean Air Act is directed more towards smoking, actual smoking and tobacco use. But there is a separate state governor's directive and state policies, excuse me, covering state properties that would include e-cigarettes.
Great, follow up if I'm mistaken, Mr. Chair. So this is just going to bring us up on our properties to the same as the state, as far as considering e-cigarettes as tobacco products on the state properties? Now on county properties will be at the same level with the e-cigarettes?
Correct. Not every, there's been a slow shift on counties, there are a few counties that have already incorporated e-cigarettes, just to get that level of clarity into their ordinance or their code, but we would be consistent with the state and some other counties. The second ordinance we'll be discussing would get the county in line with these other jurisdictions.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right, anything else?
Could I add one thing? I wanted to jump in. We have, we have had other situations where, in other departments and courthouse, where employees have been using e-cigarettes, and I just wanted to point out that along those lines, our definition of electronic cigarette, uses the phrasing, any electronic device that provides nicotine or other substances in vapor form. So as Diane was saying, Diana was saying, we can't, we don't, you can't look and see what is inside of one of these things, so we dispense with all of that. It's just if you're vaping, whatever, if it's nicotine, if it's any other substance, it violates the code, or would violate the code. Sorry, just wanted to add that last little bit.
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Chair, go ahead and make a motion.
Yes.
All right, so I would, this is by emergency, so I would move that the chair read this ordinance by title only twice.
I'll second the motion.
All right, it's moved and seconded. The chair read this ordinance by title twice. Any further discussion? Are you none of them in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, the motion passes, now for the, do the reading. I always forget that part. It's short, so I guess I should. This first reading will be, an ordinance revising and updating the Marion County Code, Chapter 8.40, relating to smoking and declaring an emergency. And the second time, an ordinance revising and updating the Marion County Code, Chapter 8.40, relating to smoking and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Chair, I would move that we approve this ordinance that revises and updates Marion County Code, Chapter 8.40, relating to smoking, and prohibits the use of electronic cigarettes by emergency procedure.
I'll second the motion.
All right, it's moved and seconded. Approve the ordinance, again, by emergency procedure. Further discussion? I hear none. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, the motion passes. All right. Our second and relating item, related item, is to consider adoption of an ordinance prohibiting smoking, tobacco use, and electronic smoking device use on county property.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, once again. I was going to give a brief overview of what this more comprehensive ordinance involves, and then Emily DeHare was going to give some background and additional, what the plan is moving forward. As we alluded to when we were just now discussing, e-cigarettes are code was adopted 10 or 15 years ago, and it is in need of updating. What is proposed here today is an ordinance that comprehensively prohibits tobacco use. It's not simply geared towards smoking, it's now includes e-cigarettes, but this comprehensive ordinance applies to all tobacco use and on all county-owned or leased property, except county roads. So to do this, we, what's before you is an ordinance that defines tobacco use broadly to include smoking, or ingesting tobacco, or tobacco-like products. And this comprehensive ordinance would also include the carrying or use of any electronic smoking device, so that will all carry forward. So this ordinance would apply to e-cigarettes, cigarettes themselves, clove cigarettes, because that is a tobacco-like product, chew, tobacco chew, or snuff, so any kind of tobacco use. And we've also, to accomplish the goal of this comprehensive ordinance, is we've defined county property ordinance, county property broadly, our current code language refers to 10 feet of doors, and it, county property is defined in the current code to buildings and facilities, but the proposed language applies to any county property that is leased or owned. So it's buildings, it's bare ground, it is parking structures, paved ground, bare grass. If it's, if the county owns it or leases it, this ordinance applies to it. The exception is county roads. The ordinance does not prohibit tobacco use on county roads. But we, but it does apply to any county-owned vehicle or county-leased vehicle, so that is consistent with the current code that we have in place right now. So within the code, there's a, it's a very, it's a straightforward prohibition. It says that the use of tobacco products is prohibited at any time on county property. And given those broad definitions of tobacco use and the broad scope of what is a county property, it applies everywhere. And so this ordinance isn't, it isn't, it's not requested to be adopted by emergency procedure, so it's, we're looking at this taking effect down the road. But along, there's also, it is envisioned that there will be a transition, and to accomplish that, for a period of time, tobacco use will be, continue to be allowed in designated smoking areas on county properties. But that will only be allowed, there will be sunset provisions, so that will only be allowed for, all in all, until July, June 30th, 2016. But, and that will be on the three campuses where there are 24-hour facilities. Well, designated smoking areas will be allowed on the jail campus, the juvenile campus, where there's the juvenile detention facility, and the public works campus, where there are, again, 24/7 operations with employees. And on those three campuses, business services director can designate a location where tobacco use will be allowed, and that until, again, June 30th, 2016. As of July 1, 2016, all county property, the tobacco use will be prohibited on all county property. And then on other county properties that aren't one of those three campuses, designated smoking areas will continue to be allowed until June 30th, 2015, about six months from now. So that will be the transition. The smoking areas will continue to be allowed, if, if the business services director designates these locations, but only for six months on certain campuses, and only for a year and a half for the three 24/7 facilities. And I guess the last piece relates to enforcement. Under the current code, someone can be cited for smoking, for, it's a $100 violation. Enforcement would be carried out by Sheriff's Office and code enforcement, but the main thing initially is, there's going to be an education push, and assistance provided for folks to cease, to quit smoking, and that is the utmost goal, is to ensure the safety and health of our, of our employees. And we'll be coming back to you later to our, the ordinance spells out that the board will set a, the fine amount. The current, under the current code, it's $100, but we'll come back to you later with an order, a proposed order, for you to establish what the fine will be, because we don't call it out specifically in this ordinance. We'll bring that back to you. And lastly, the, the language continues, the current code allows, or if an employee violates the code, they can be subject to discipline, and that will continue. If an employee violates this code, then it can be handled through the discipline process. With that, I'll be happy to answer questions later, but I wanted to pass it on.
I have questions now.
Commissioner, go ahead.
So Bruce, this has been bugging me ever since I pulled these out, and I thought I understood it when we went through it on management update, but I'm looking at it, and it's still, I just want to make sure I'm clear on this. So we just passed an ordinance that took effect immediately, because we did it by emergency. That ordinance changes Marion County Code, Chapter 8.40, which I've pulled out here, and you provided, and thank you for that. So it defines an electronic cigarette, or an e-cigarette, as an electronic device that provides nicotine or other substances in vapor form, and the use which stimulates smoking. That will be in effect for 90 days until this takes effect, which we do a second reading from whenever 90 days is. And then the definition of electronic cigarette is an electronic or battery-operated device, so battery-operated wasn't in the definition that we just passed, that delivers nicotine, rather than provides nicotine or other substances in vapor form, and which may stimulate smoking, and this one said, and the use which stimulates smoking. So we just, we, instead of bringing it in the same, we brought it in with two different versions of the words. So I kind of want to understand why that is. And then you made a point when we talked through the last time, okay, other, yeah, okay, the other substances, that's fine, never mind.
It is bare, yes.
So both of them include that, and then we changed the definition of smoke or smoking from what it is currently in 8.40 to this new definition that we just passed. The definition of smoke or smoking isn't included at all in this new definition, so then I'm assuming that when it says that we would repeal certain provisions, that we're not repealing the smoking definition, that stays in, and we're overlaying all these other definitions. Is that correct?
That last, no, that is not correct.
All right, so then what happens?
The, what this ordinance does, and will be incorporated into the code, is it uses the phrasing, tobacco use. And tobacco use, we don't even have, I don't believe, tobacco, sorry, use of tobacco means to inhale, exhale, burn, carry, ingest, or use any tobacco product, or tobacco-like product. product, or tobacco-like product. So what we're looking for is broad language, so actively inhaling, exhaling, burning, or carrying, it's pretty, it's equivalent to what we currently have, which is to smoke or carry a lighted instrument, but what we get at here is, or, to basically inhale, exhale, carry, or use.
Okay, so is the rea-
Tobacco products.
Is the reason that we didn't approve that immediately, because we wanted to make as minimal changes as possible for the one we're doing by emergency, just to kind of be a stopgap, and then, this one is the comprehensive change, and so, explain to me again, when do these new definitions take effect? Because I get that the implementation of the ordinance occurs, it's, so, it, it's in phases, depending on where the property is, but will these definitions that we just approved by emergency be the definitions that cover, in the county facilities that are, like the jail and so on, that are going to be out for a long time, or do we change the definitions immediately, when this ordinance takes effect 90 days from the second reading, and then the enforcement of it in those places then takes place in a phased way?
The, the addition of e-cigarettes that we addressed moments ago, you, you called it correctly, because we just wanted to make that one singular slight change, add that language to incorporate e-cigarettes, and not, and keep it simple.
Right, I got that, but when does that go away? That's my question.
That goes away, if you do your second reading in two weeks, and then if the ordinance takes effect 90 days after that, the current, all of that current language that-
That we just passed, just, that goes away?
Will go away, and entirely be replaced by all of these definitions.
Okay.
And what that does, and that, it gets at that broadness of what we're seeking to do here, because what we currently have is ban on smoking in e-cigarettes, and this comprehensive ordinance is focused on, well, it's comprehensive, it's all about the use of tobacco. And, so the, what jumps out to me is, we have e-cigarettes, we have smoking, but we also have chew, snuff, other, other forms of, of use. It's different wording, but for, in terms of the smoking piece and the e-cigarettes, it gets at the same result.
Okay, so if I could just clarify, make sure I understand this, so this 8.40 smoking that is currently there, it goes away in its entirety and is replaced by this, when this takes effect?
Correct.
And the one that we just passed amends the old one, for purposes of putting e-cigarettes in, but then even the revision of that goes away when the original ordinance goes away, and it gets replaced by this?
Yep.
And everything that was in this is covered in its entirety by the new one?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
Thank you for, for your patience in my confusion.
All right. Go ahead.
My name's, Mr. Chair and Commissioners, my name is Emily DeHare, and I'm the Tobacco Prevention Education Program Coordinator up in Woodburn. I'm going to give a little bit of information today about the proposed ordinance, the how and why, and all the good details. So the big question is why tobacco-free, and this is definitely a topic that isn't taken lightly, we know that nicotine is one of the most addictive substances around, and so, really, the, the bottom line for this ordinance is that secondhand smoke exposure, including in the outdoors, is still a danger, and we are, are looking to increase the health and safety of staff and clients. So there was a study done in Stanford University that did measurements of particulate matter in outdoor settings, and that, what they found is that these chemicals and other particulate matter can be measured 25 feet from the source, showing that secondhand smoke exposure still can occur outdoors. What we know is that the Surgeon General has said there's no safe level of secondhand smoke exposure, because even small exposures can cause damage, health, health damage at the most minimal level. So our main concern is the health and safety of staff and clients, as we know Marion County serves high-needs clients such as mental health, WIC, at-risk juveniles, and pregnant women, to name a few. And we've had several concerns and complaints from staff at Marion County, definitely to myself as well, that they're being exposed to secondhand smoke exposure at their workplace. In addition to this, this ordinance would provide consistency with the Oregon Executive Order, Governor's Executive Order, which, which makes the state properties tobacco-free, which was addressed earlier, including e-cigarettes. Currently, right now, on those, on those state properties, tobacco use, including e-cigarettes, is not allowed anywhere on state property. Another concern that we've had is that we have had some issues with compliance for the Oregon Indoor Clean Air Act, and that is the state law that prohibits smoking within 10 feet of any window, door, air intake vent, or accessibility ramp. We've had four properties at Marion County that have received complaints with Smoke-Free Workplace Law, which gets forwarded to our program. We've done site visits at multiple locations, and several of those issues have been staff smoking within the violation of the Indoor Clean Air Act, that's been stipulated on the, on the wording of the violation, or the complaint. The state law, the possibility for citation, occurs after multiple violations, and is up to a hundred dollars, or $500 per violation, with no maximum amount, there used to be a $4,000 limit, but now that's gone away. So that's definitely a concern as well, is that we're, even though we are, we have designated smoking areas at different locations, we're still having issues with compliance for the Indoor Clean Air Act. The new, as Diana mentioned, there are several new in tobacco, or new and emerging tobacco and tobacco-like products. Diana had her candy jar, which showed you all the different flavors and packaging, so that's another issue that this, this really addresses, is that those products, all tobacco products, or tobacco-like products would be included in the ordinance. As Rod mentioned, we've had programs that have had issues with client use of these devices, obviously the new ordinance that you passed this morning would cover that, but this would extend, extend that to outdoor areas as well. This is just an image of some of the products that you've had, might be easier to see than the jar, but you can see there's different flavors, like cotton candy and bubble gum, and just some other tobacco-like products earlier.
Excuse me, Diana, why don't you bring the jar up here, so we can, can we pass it around?
You smell it? So some of these, the snooze that you see at the bottom is a little packet that's a dissolvable, there's zigzag wrappers that are flavored, the cigareos, and little cigars, electronic devices, and hookah as well. Hookah is tobacco-like product, and is, would be covered in the ordinance as well. I see some grimaces up there.
It's potent. You cannot describe it.
Kind of a blueberry.
So, a little about, a little bit about ordinance implementation, this is definitely a slimline version of what the Communication and Action Plan would entail, but we realized that it's a, it would be a large change, and so this is, there's, we would create a detailed communication and implementation plan. So the first would be a communication plan of the ordinance to staff, clients, and the general public, and in which ways we are able to communicate, communicate the new changes would be through social media, local media stations, internal communications, our website, and Diana and I are more than happy to do all staff presentations, to talk about the how and why, in whichever departments need that to occur. We would also do promotion of the Oregon Tobacco Quit Line and other Marion County resources, so that those who are interested, interested in quitting would have that opportunity, and I'll get into that a little bit later. As you see at the bottom, there are, these are examples of signage, the first one is from Clatsop County, second is from Molnoma, the third is Umatilla, and the fourth is Benton County. These are all sign, signs that are posted on their county properties currently. We would be able to fund something similar, and the design would really be up to however it wanted to go, and, and then we would get those signs posted on county properties. The signs are the main way that the ordinance is communicated, as well as serves as, as an enforcement piece, and what we've heard from these other counties that have already adopted this type of ordinance, is that these policies are mostly self-enforcing, and the signage is a key piece for that, so that it's a point of reference for staff and the general public. Bruce mentioned that there'll be designated smoking areas, and this is just a little bit more detail, but as proposed, all current designated smoking areas would be eliminated, eliminated by June 30th of 2015, with the exception of the three properties that are 24-hour operations, including juvenile, public works, and the jail. These departments would need to ask permission from the Business Services Director and the CAO for extension of the, their designated smoking area for that extra year. All, then after that, all designated smoking areas will be eliminated by June 30th of 2016, which would then mean that we would have 100% tobacco-free and smoke-free property. Those dates are in the ordinance as well. And, and the, the, or the reason why we discussed designated smoking areas, is because we, we did realize that there were some health and safety concerns, as was discussed in previous work session meetings, about the operation, or the 24-hour operations of staff going offsite in the middle of the night, and onto different properties. So hopefully that, that is a, would help those areas, and then we would work with those departments when those designated smoking areas would be eliminated. So a key piece of how this would be rolled out is tobacco cessation and support. This is where Diana and I and our Tobacco Prevention Program have a lot of training, we realize that there really needs to be support existing for staff and the general public who are interested in quitting. The Oregon Health Authority did a study, and they found that 70% or more of Oregonians who are current tobacco users, or smokers, would like to quit or are interested in quitting. So what we know is that people out there, who are smoking currently, want to quit, but they haven't found something that has been successful yet, or they haven't attempted. So we also have a summary of the benefits of what Marion County employees receive, if they're regular employees, or benefit covered, and so, we would work with Marion County Wellness and the Incentive Reimbursement Program to get that, those resources out there. There is also a list of free or low-cost resources for non-benefit employees, for staff, and for the general public. An example of these would be the Oregon Tobacco Quit Line, so local resources, and, and a whole slew of online resources as well. And then definitely an education component for staff and clients, this would include discussions about new and emerging tobacco products, such as electronic smoking devices, and what other products are included in that. This is an example of the summary form that we have, that shows what, what programs and resources are covered under the Marion County Health Benefits Programs. We also included the Oregon Tobacco Quit Line, because our staff still has access to that, and then the Marion County Tobacco Cessation Incentive Program. So just a little bit about the Oregon Tobacco Quit Line. This is a free resource to all Oregonians, regardless of citizenship, it's available seven days a week, so the less insurance coverage that you have, the more access you have to the Oregon Tobacco Quit Line. It's in over 170 different languages, and is a tailored program for each individual, so when you call in, you're assigned to a counselor, and they really develop a quit line program specific to your needs. It's also available online, in English and in Spanish, so you have unlimited online access, you also have instant messaging services, and that's something that is just rolled out in the last couple of years, but we're finding is definitely successful. And that is the end of my presentation, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Are there questions?
Yeah, I guess. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Rod, maybe this is probably for the Health Department, and if this, if we pass this today, June 15th, all properties other than the three we mentioned would be non-smoking, so my experience out at the Health Department that I shared with you, when would that smoking area probably go away? Sometime between now and June 15, or June 30th, is that how I read this?
Right, yeah, that designated smoking area is at the Center Street Campus.
Right.
And actually, by some quirk, of kind of the service mix that we provide at our other campuses, those are generally tobacco-free, because they contain an alcohol and drug service provision. The Center Street Campus is not, we have a designated smoking area out in front, and as Emily said, there have been complaints from staff and our customers coming through, and having to walk through a cloud of smoke. So we'd like to see that gone as, as quickly as, as possible, I think we would be looking to get the new signage up quickly, and also make sure we do the education for staff, because we do have a few people who use our designated smoking areas.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
So first of all, thank you for your presentation, Diana, thank you for the jar, I'm so glad again that you brought that, because that's such a nice visual, and Emily, thank you for a really great presentation, and I think this is a very important topic, and appreciate all of the thought that's gone into what's being brought forward today. I also, Rod, appreciate your comment about how tough it is for people to quit smoking, I know my, I've mentioned this before in meetings, maybe not here, but my dad was a smoker, and it took him, thinking I was in the fourth grade when he started trying to quit smoking, and he finally quit when I was in the seventh grade, so, I mean, that's a while. So, it's, it's just not easy for people to do that, and, and I know that we'll probably get criticism from some people, saying that we're limiting their, their right to, to smoke, I mean, people that smoke feel like that they have, they have a right to do that, and we're infringing on that right, and, so, we're gonna, I appreciate that we're going to be looking at educating, we're going to be looking at assisting, we're gonna be, we're not going to be the smoking police, or whatever, out there trying to enforce in a, in a heavy-handed way, and I think that's really important, I also think it's important, looking at the 24/7 operations, because as we talked about, we don't want to move people just from smoking in a designated smoking spot, to going out and smoking in their car, or somewhere else where it's going to be probably less healthy for them to be doing, to be doing that. So the question that I have in my mind, that I just wanted to, to add to this discussion, is that what we saw when the state hospital, it's probably happened more places than that, it's just so obvious, when you drive up Center Street, along the state hospital grounds, because they're so big, and so what people did is, they can, they didn't quit smoking, some of them, they can, just moved out and are smoking on the sidewalks, and so can you speak a bit to how we're going to manage that or not? And then also, is there ever going to be an instance where the City of Salem is going to say, "You can't smoke on the sidewalk," or is that kind of a constitutional right, because the sidewalks are public places, and, you know, I'm not sure how that works, so I just wondered if you thought about that?
We'll, theoretically, I believe, I haven't researched what other jurisdictions have done in terms of prohibiting smoking on sidewalks, but if, if there's a rational basis, and there's a, and there's the health issue, and we've heard discussion of, even in the outdoors, the health concerns, it is, it is conceivable. But you're right, I've driven down Center Street and seen folks carrying their milk carton to sit on, and smoke on the sidewalk, but, in the end, when, down the road after July 1, or on July 1, 2016, that is, that would be true at Marion County properties also, and that, that would be the expectation here in this building, of folks going out to the sidewalk. And, so that is what you would see around county properties. Hopefully, hopefully there would not be very many, because hopefully, the folks that do want to quit would, would be able to, but the reality is, many will not.
Would you like to say something about the City of Salem?
Can you just see my bursting? The City of Salem just passed an ordinance that includes public rights of way, if, it's up for public service agencies, or public agencies, so Marion County would, would apply to that. So they passed an ordinance that allows public agencies with a certain amount of frontage, it's, I believe it's a 100-foot frontage on your property, so if you have a 100-foot sidewalk, you can include the sidewalk, as well as the landscape or green space area, so basically going up to the curb, you can include that into your, into your policy. So the city said that that agency would be responsible to enforce that with their staff, and they would help enforce that with the public. That was, that just passed last month, and it's a fairly new concept, but it does allow agencies such as Lamont, the county- agencies such as Willamette, the county, other public agencies to include the sidewalk into the property, if that became a big concern. And the way that that would happen is you would apply to the city to be able to include that, and that's obviously within the city limits, or the city of Salem, but that's an option.
Can I just ask you, so 100 feet, so that would be like the juvenile department, the Health Department, where they have a lot of frontage?
Correct.
The state hospital would probably be included in that?
Correct.
Probably wouldn't include the office building here at Courthouse Square, because we just have a minimal amount of space, correct?
That I'm not, not totally sure, because of chariots as well. I think you have to have, there'd have to be some sort of...
Figuring out where you count it from?
Right. But this building as a whole, if it was all Marion County property, that would definitely be able to be included.
It just, the thought was, I mean, on the one hand, you have people now that are using the sidewalk, and so we don't want to just shift more and more and more people using the sidewalk, because you're just gonna have, it's gonna be like...
Right.
Really difficult for people to walk by and not experience...
Correct.
The secondhand smoke. You know, on the other hand, people are gonna say, "Well, then I have absolutely no option at all, and what if I can't quit?" So, I mean, it's that balance, I think.
And that's something that we've discussed with the other counties, Multnomah, Washington County, Benton, Umatilla, because we also had that same concern. We had that concern when we worked with Willamette and Salem Health and other large organizations. And it seems like their reality is that some people do go out to the sidewalk, but because they have signage, and they did a big communication plan to start, people became aware that that property, they just knew that that property is smoke-free or tobacco-free. So they would either smoke in their cars on the way there, or they would smoke somewhere else. But it, from what I have talked to with the other county folks, that didn't, that hasn't presented a huge issue at the moment. The only issue that they talked about in Umatilla is that they're, they had some issues around with their courthouse, where all the jurors would go there and smoke, and their sidewalk was basically adjacent to the building. So it wasn't really a buffer, but that's one of the main concerns. But it is a valid concern, because like you mentioned, state hospital, you still see people standing out there. And what we're hoping is that we can really capture some of those folks to help quit that are interested, because such a large majority do want to quit.
Okay, thank you.
We'll do some comments. I let everybody talk. I'm always hesitant to, I've known I'm a nut for a long time, but I hate to let other people see it. I won't be voting for this. This is all the things that I'm philosophically opposed to. This is nanny state stuff, and you're really pinning it down. You want to change behavior. Well, I think everybody knows it'd be better not. I don't know if I agree with your statistics on 70% that want to change. They probably would. I don't know. But this just goes too far. And where does it stop? We buy it because we say, "Well, society pays for individual decisions, so we'll take those decisions away from them." Well, you could say that about getting in a car, and every time somebody gets in a car, you drive, and there's a risk. Every time you plug a cord in, there's a risk, and that's all right. But then where does it stop? We've already seen them, this is the nanny state stuff that gets me so fried, banning what size of pop you can have, how big an order of fries you can get, bicycle helmets. Now you say, "Sam, nobody could be opposed to bicycle helmets." Well, I'll tell you this, my bike, all my kids' bikes went dusty after that law was passed. You can't even ride a bike around your neighborhood. Anyway, it's philosophically, I'm really opposed to it. I can hear from the others that it's gonna pass, fine, but I just want to go on record and say, if it's just me, I wouldn't do that. You can know it's bad. I don't really buy, Emily, if you have places that there's a huge effect on the public, what you are gonna do is harass employees and public. They'll either have to stop, which is what you want, maybe I want it to, but, or they're gonna spend their whole day watching the clock and hoping for minutes rather than being productive, or they're gonna quit and go somewhere else. So I guess if that's your goal, you'll have accomplished it. I just don't want to be part of it. So now you know I'm a nut, too.
Sure.
Oh, you have to say sure, so quick.
I already knew that, I've seen pictures.
All right.
Mr. Chair, and I want to just make it clear that I, the reason I'm supporting this is for consistency of what's already happening in our town with state properties, that, you know, that we have a consistent policy throughout for employees and the public, and at least it'll be the same. And I understand totally what you're saying. There were some things in my past that, at the legislature, you can check my record on, you know, outlawing, making it illegal for you to smoke in your car with your kids, and some other things that I would agree with you on, that you can check my votes on those things. But this is about something that I think's already out there, we need to be consistent, and I'm trying to help bring some consistency to Marion County, and I'm with you. Love to see people quit. I have my habits that I wish I could quit, and some that I've started that are, that are great. So I guess you're ready for a motion. I'd like to make a motion. Mr. Chair, I'll move that we adopt an ordinance prohibiting the use of all tobacco products in Marion County buildings and on Marion County property, providing certain exemptions and repealing the provisions within Marion County Code, Chapter 8.40.
Mr., sorry, I just wanted to jump, this is a first reading of, I think it's planned that this will come back two weeks, or at a minimum of 14 days for the second reading and the, and the actual adoption.
Right, so what's the actual motion?
For the first reading?
The first reading.
So how does it phrase?
The motion to do the first reading of the ordinance.
By title only.
So the chair reads the ordinance, so it's the same?
So, Mr. Chair, I withdraw the last motion and make a motion that the chair read the ordinance for the first reading by title only.
That's good enough.
That's the motion? And I'll second the motion.
All right, it's been moved to second and have first reading of the ordinance having to do with tobacco use in Marion County. Any further discussion?
Yeah, I just want to say one thing, and, you know, I can appreciate your comments, and you certainly have the right to be opposed to this. I just, and I can appreciate Commissioner Cameron saying that he wants to be consistent. And, you know, on the one hand, you don't want to impose your, a value system, but when the evidence is so clear that there is so much harm that comes from smoking, and when you balance, is there any good that comes from smoking? I mean, there's a lot of good that comes from driving a car, and you take that risk. But I just know I spent my childhood with ventilators over my head, and pneumonia, and I have, you know, bronchitis now and shortness of breath, because I grew up in a household where there was heavy smoke, and, well, maybe you can't blame all of it on that, I just can't believe that it's not connected. It's just the idea that people get a habit, and then that habit creates problems for their children, for their spouses, for others that are in the same household. It's one thing to say, "It's my business." It's another thing when that business actually impacts others. And so in Marion County, when we have pregnant women, and mentally ill people, and the WIC would be young children and their parents coming to Marion County, I just think it's critical that we do this. So I just want to put my, I mean, I'm not, you're just for consistency, I firmly believe this is the right thing to do.
All right. I don't make, mean to make light of your comments, but someday we'll be asked to ban ham sandwiches, and I'll throw my foot down there, too.
There's good out of ham sandwiches.
He's got that fat. All right, anything else? Call a question? All in favor, say aye.
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 And opposed, aye. A motion passes. Thank you all, and all for your work and concern.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next item's under Public Works, considering entering into a declaration of covenants and restrictions with the Army Corps of Engineers to restrict development within an 1,800-square-foot parcel of property owned by Marion County. Cindy Schmidt, do you have the nice pictures you had at our management update meeting? No. Let's just, let me just set for the public, this is a tiny pyramid off to the side of a bridge that won't be used for anything else. And with that, Cindy, go ahead.
Thank you. Excuse me. Chair Brantano, Commissioners, good morning. The item that we brought to you is this Declaration of Covenants and Restrictions that would be potentially applied to a small portion of a remnant county parcel that we own adjacent to one of our county bridges. The purpose of the Declaration of Covenants is essentially to create a conservation easement on a small portion of land that would keep it in perpetuity in its natural state. And the need for this particular document has to do with a bridge that we have on Abacoa Road, which is south and east of Silverton. It's in, Abacoa Road is very rural, goes up into the foothills, and we have this county-owned bridge over Abacoa Creek. And this particular creek is very active, and even in small rainstorms, it tends to rise very quickly, and it's a very turbulent stream, so it tends to do a fair amount of damage to the banks. And in the case of the last few years at this bridge on Abacoa Road, the turbulence has been undermining the pier of our bridge, along with our abutments and the bank in that area. So we've needed to go in and do a mitigation, a scour mitigation project, to protect the integrity of the structure. So to do work like that, and place fill and boulders or riprap, we have to obtain various permits, environmental permits, to work in that in-water area. And we get those from the Division of State Lands and from the Army Corps of Engineers. And generally, those permits come with strings attached to address any environmental concerns related to the work you're doing. Those typically take the form of doing plantings along a stream bank to address fish issues and other clean water types of issues. But in this particular stream case, those were likely to not be successful, so we negotiated with them to create this, this conservation easement. As it turns out, the county owns a remnant parcel right adjacent to the bridge. It's a very small parcel, and it is really not a buildable parcel. Most of the parcel's actually underwater a good percentage of the year. And so this easement that we're proposing would cover just a small portion of one bank. It's about 1,800 square feet that it would apply to, which, as you mentioned, Chair Brantano, that is a kind of a long, pointy triangle, about 100 feet long and about 30 feet wide at the widest. The bank there is relatively steep, it's got a couple of trees on it, some brush and boulders, so it's, it's not really area that can be used for much, other than occasional recreational use to approach the water. Excuse me. The actual declaration really, it doesn't impose significant restrictions in terms of how the property has historically been used. It does require that we would obligate ourselves in perpetuity to not build on the parcel, allow it to be mined, or significant soil to be excavated, or anything that would take it out of its natural state. It does, however, still allow recreational use and public use to access the riverbank. That would be always allowed, unless, of course, it created some kind of impact, people were doing things to take it out of its natural state that we wouldn't want to allow, probably anyway. So the actual impact of the declaration is simply, it's not gonna have a practical impact to the way the property has been managed in the past. So with that, the agreement, or the declaration, needs to have signatures from the board if you approve it, and after that, it would be recorded and become a perpetual requirement for this, this remnant piece of property. If you have any questions about the purpose or anything, I can, happy to answer.
No, I'm just wondering if, maybe we could hold this picture up, and Mark could put the camera in it. Mark, can you hear me? If I hold this up like this, can you zoom in on it?
What's the one with the...
Doesn't have the...
Red.
Doesn't have the red on it, but we can just point it, right, yeah. So tell me when you're there.
He's there.
Are you there?
I'm up.
So it's just, if I'm right, Cindy, it's just this little area right here, right?
Exactly, yep.
Where we have the triangle on the picture that we saw...
Yeah.
...the other day. So it's not area that we would ever really probably want to mine or develop, or, it just doesn't...
No, and as I said, in the high-water events, a lot of that area is underwater, in the wintertime, anyway.
Okay, that helps. Picture's worth a thousand words.
Mr. Chair, the most important question, and I think Cindy answered the other day, we could still stand there and fish, or shoot ducks, or launch a raft or a kayak from there?
Can't build a boat.
Probably can't smoke on it now.
No, can't.
No, we could, because it's not county property anymore.
That's true.
All right, then we're opening it up. All right, any other questions? I mentioned this the other day, thank you, that's real, this is an easy fix for us, no cost, no damage, you take care of a problem, very innovative, is what I'm trying to say, and I appreciate that very much, Cindy, you or whoever thought of it.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any other questions, and could we have a motion approves?
Yeah, okay. Mr. Chair, we'd move that the county enter into a declaration and covenants restrictions with the Army Corps of Engineers to restrict development within an 1,800-square-foot parcel of property owned by Marion County, and so, yeah, I think that's the motion.
I'll second.
All right, so moving second, having to do with the covenants, having to do with the property on Abacoa Creek that we've been discussing. Any further discussion? I don't hear any call a question. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye, the motion passes. Again, thank you all.
Thank you.
Well, that ends our, that would be our last item of the year, is how that just was.
And we all voted yes.
Yeah, wasn't that nice?
Right.
Most of the time, we do.
We do.
I think it's because you're so convincing, and that should scare people. But the last thing to do here is to read the places we'll be together in this next week. Tomorrow's a holiday, I don't know why they list that, I don't think we'll be together. Monday, we have calendar review at 8:30 in the Silver and Conference Room here in the fifth floor, 555 Court Street Northeast, Courthouse Square. And then a pretty special event, Marion County swearing-in ceremony, and that'll be in this room, the Senator Hearing Room, first floor, 555 Court Street Northeast, in Salem, will begin at nine o'clock, and will be, well, I think it's more, it's more than just the two of you, isn't it? Is there others that are being sworn in at this?
I imagine it would be the district attorney, the sheriff, right? They were both elected, Louie, yes.
Louie, so pretty, pretty big and special event, and the public's welcome, and that's at nine o'clock on the fifth, Monday. And then that's followed at one o'clock, we have Board of Commissioners Chief Administrative Officer Meeting, an executive session if needed pursuant to O.R.S. 1926602A, B.F. and I, Silver and Conference Room, fifth floor. At five o'clock on Monday, the fifth, a meeting with Kevin Mannix and elected officials, I'll be at McGrath's Restaurant, 350 Chameka Street in Salem. The next day, Tuesday, the sixth, 1:00 to 2:30, a work session having to do with, it says marijuana, I thought it was more specifically medical, but I don't know that. Anyway, it says marijuana, Silver and Conference Room, fifth floor, 555 Court Street again. Our next board session is nine o'clock next Wednesday, here in this location, Senator Hearing Room. And then we'll be going to, there it is, a Woodburn Marion County meeting at noon, and it'll be at Luises Taqueria, 523 Front Street in Woodburn. I might have had it backwards, a tour set up in, before that meeting?
Yeah, in fact, they'd like to move it up to 10:30, so...
All right, so that, what's scheduled, either 10:30 or 11, is a tour of the Marion County McLaren Youth Correction Facility in Woodburn. So the idea is to go take a tour of the McLaren before having our weekly meeting with local officials in Woodburn. And that should be rather interesting, they're talking about making some big changes there. I've been around it all my life, but I've, luckily, never been in it. You may wonder, don't you?
I've not been there either.
All right.
But I heard yesterday Kathy Figley, Mayor of Woodburn, and Scott Derrickson, their city manager, will be joining us.
Great.
Are you coming to that, George?
Yes.
You are, good, okay.
Well, as I hinted about, this is the last meeting of the year, last meeting that I chair. I know we'll do state-of-the-county stuff in a few months and kind of review the whole year, but for me, a significant, big change is Commissioner Cameron coming in, and then, of course, the elections continue, is pretty happy where we were. We've had some big issues. I, I even hate to think of it, the whole thing was so upsetting to me with the issue with the, I don't even want to say it, but the burning at Covanta, it was bad. And as I think of this year, that's the one that, I'm gonna have to say it all, people might not understand, the burning fetuses. But we acted quickly, got it stopped, and hopefully we did, it's continued to be stopped, but it was truly, the thing is, I woke up, go, "No, tell me it's not true." So quite a year in that way, and we'll get into it further. So thanks for letting me be the chair. You notice I moved meetings right along?
You do, you do a great job as chair.
Thank you. Sorry I had to beg for that.
Mr. Chair, I will say that it's been an honor to be here for the last six months with both of you. Big change in my life, and this meeting, right here today, is an example of what I never got to experience. And this meeting right here today is an example of what I never got to experience, maybe once or twice in the legislature where the chair actually let an issue come forward and let the committee vote the issue out of the deal even though he was or she was opposed to it. And so I really appreciate how you operate here and allow people to say what they need to say and do what they need to do. And it's been an honor to learn. I'm actually doing my own email now, so catching up on that and got my schedule turned over to the way we all do our schedules here, pretty much.
I suppose it is different. Like today was kind of hard for me because I know I feel different than you do and it'd be easier just to let it go and you don't have to show yourself. But if you want to, I got that from Umatilla Councilor Hansel, Bill Hansel, and you must know him, he's now a state senator. And early, I stopped by and introduced myself one day just visiting, said, "This is the most important thing, is at least you've got to tell people why, what you're thinking behind your vote." And I'd like to just vote yes or no and move on, but I always think of that and try to give a little flavor of what goes on in my mind. What do you do?
I thought that was really important. And I think, Commissioner Cameron, you bring out, I mean, there is a culture in Marion County. When I came here, I'm not sure it was a little bit of a culture clash for me because, you know, I'm kind of a, let's go drive-through and get it done and things sort of moved along. And so, you know, I think the county has adjusted to me and I've adjusted to the county. I know I've made some changes in my approach, but it's been a really good thing for me to be here and I've learned a lot from being here. And I think you've called out what's really important about us working together as a board that, I think, and Commissioner Brantano mentioned that, we tend to agree on a lot of things and we probably vote the same way. I haven't ever counted the votes, but it's probably a good 90, maybe even more than 99% of the time. But we do have the opportunity on those occasions to express ourselves and to say we're not in agreement and we respect each other when we do that and it's civil and we move forward. And so that's what's important, I think.
Yeah. And what I've learned is it's our management updates are much like work sessions at the, excuse me, much like public hearings at the Capitol. Of course, the public's invited to our management updates to listen to that discussion and I've seen that staff goes back and adjusts based on feedback that we get. So a lot of that work is being done before we even get here today. And I don't know that, are we still on?
Yeah.
I don't know that the people really realize that, so if they have input to pay attention to those meetings and come and give their feedback and/or let us know individually so we can take that feedback into those meetings. So there's a lot of work and discussion, differences of opinion that happen in those meetings that are civil, cordial, and make a big difference in getting a better policy. I mean, this whole smoking thing is different than what it was when we first started out, several of the things that we've passed. And I think there's only been two times that I can remember since I've been here in six months that one of us voted differently than the others, but because of that, most of it's good crafting of policy.
Well, and that's true that by the time it gets here, generally, we're in agreement because we've modified it and asked a lot of questions and asked, our staff does a great job of doing outreach into the community. I think we have a really strong communication plan that we're looking at in the upcoming year. I'm looking forward to that so that we can get more information out to the public before an item like this comes to a board session so that they can weigh in through email or coming to meetings or that kind of thing. So it keeps improving all the time.
I think we give three different viewpoints and have always that I've been here, but by the time we get done, I think we have a product that's well-thought-out and generally works. So I'm pleased with it. Anyway, it's been a fun year and I'm sure it'll be, well, we talked about this already, didn't we? It'll be a fun year next year, too. Anything else?
Just thanks to Gloria and Kim for...
Kim, putting up with it?
Go Ducks!
For keeping us on the rails, in between the rails.
So happy new year to all and we'll call this meeting adjourned.